Order from recess, June the 13th, 2017, 5:00 PM. Mr. Byer, you've got an agenda?
Yes, there's an agenda there in front of you. Just for general following. The, what is handed out to you on your desk. Committee of working with Mr. Hale has been working on the the plans, set of plans and documents for the center. The, what you've got in front of you is what Mr. Hale has proposed on him speaking about it, of using the Commonwealth of Virginia general conditions of the contract. Now, that's the DGS 30-054 in the back, and I didn't copy all the pages of it for you. Copy is, I can make copies of them for everybody who wants to. But what you've got is, that set of documents, the next large set of documents is the contract documents that go with this, bid bond, award, all those items as well. And then sort of the meat and potatoes of it is the sections Division 0310 and Division 0800 and 820 that have been written basically for, with counties here on the project. Mr. Hale and myself, I think it was Mr. Dalton, yesterday, and he took home the set of the plans, the lane group specifications, technical specifications, and these contract documents as well that you have in front of. So with that, I request Mr. Hale to give a little bit of information here of intent and what the goal is here of using the Commonwealth of Virginia contract.
Well, there's been other revisions that you don't have that are site specific. I know that these documents by the state have all been court qualified, and they're a good way to track the jobs and keep things in order. But the general conditions are in depth. The in-depth general conditions, I think, cover quite a few things protecting the owner better than trade associations being AIA documents or different engineering group documents. For buildings, maybe not for shore and water jobs or government-funded jobs, but for a local building, they work really well. The only part I feel like we need to address is the part that incorporates the state documents to be used as our document. And if you see the adopt your agreement, I've been using it all over the state for 30 years, and it's never been challenged that that makes the state documents usable and they are free for us to use. If you go to the next page, section 00800, supplemental general conditions, there are several things in there that needed to be site specific. One being in that first item, that all of your local codes apply to the work of this project. The one that you don't have an answer on, I think Stephen just gave me the answer a few minutes ago, that we would go with VACO, all risk, builder's risk, cost. Because I know it's cheaper to get it from VACO, that is, to have the contractor pay for it, because he's going to turn right around and put it back in his bid price and mark it up. And rest of it, there's been parts of it that missed, if you see it, see there, under DC, not used, because they didn't apply it to this project. The next page being, if you go down to page, right near the end of section 800, it says, "With County, ask for bids, contractor shall provide." And that's the way I was working at the time, and I think that's probably going to change after you hear Mr. Dalton's report. But the important thing there was to tie these lane documents to the document. If you read in there, the lane group, project number 1672, as completed, and it's stamped on 627, because most of the stamps on those documents are not lane stamps, they're stamps by all their selves. There's not a one on there that has lane name on it. Only Doug Williams is the only one I know, and I could be wrong, that's actually an employee of the lane group. Depends on how much you know about E and O insurance and professional liability insurance. Lane's professional liability insurance only covers employees that are registered and work for Lane, unless there's a document that says so. Their insurance company would shoot right through that. And then it goes on, and then impart of talking about how we wish the ability to break the job down, the special conditions that are in here are pretty much standard. We've got some stuff in there that is right and proper about fire protection. Those things are part of the construction manager's responsibility, so he has to have the authority to force his responsibility. Now, one that's important to me is 1.10. With County is not responsible for the means and methods of construction. With County is not responsible for safety monitoring during construction. That needs contracts, so we tie it right back to the contractor, they're his employees. He has to deal with OSHA, it's not our responsibility to deal with. And then one that might anger others and cure others, 1.12. There must be an English-speaking supervisor shall be on-site at all times. It may not be necessary to say that twice about the coverage, and I agree on that. The part then that was added, Stephen just handed to you, and since the spelling is not good, we haven't had time to get them, we'll read it to you, case of speech problem. There's, this first rework here is already in your document, it really don't change until you get over to, really, the big changes occur on 820. As you can see, if you read this, some of this did not apply to this job, because it's a, it's a construction site, there's no buildings there, there are no students there.
When you said, if we've read this, have we seen this before? I, okay.
Okay, pardon me here.
No, I'm, I just wanted to make sure I wasn't supposed to have had it before and, you know, been up on-
I don't know, but he meant that Jennifer just typed up the one part yesterday for us to get in here, and a lot of us got the yellow highlights that you see in there. The other part, you may have seen a draft of it previously, but it's not been all put together.
I just didn't know if I had missed something I was supposed to have seen.
There's a couple on, if you want to go along with what I wrote, 820 deck three, which is not tight, so I'll read it. Omitted a couple in there that are not related to this project. It steps changing on 1.12, protection, it calls out the part that I've left out, the owner will continue to occupy the buildings, obviously, there are no buildings out there. This was taken from a school job. But the next one has significant changes, 1.13. The lane group or the owner, to be inserted there, is not responsible for means and methods of construction. Also neither, the architect, engineer group, calling out the lane group by name, or the owner, is responsible for any safety monitoring during construction. Now, a lawyer might tell you, don't say that twice, but it's something that really could turn into a liability issue, I don't have a problem saying it twice. Then you get down under, right after, under the English-speaking supervisor, contractor shall have on-site building plans and specifications. That is really hard to enforce. Number two, current MSDS sheets, also hard to enforce. Those are the things that OSHA will ask for when they show up, and anything this big, they're going to be here. 1.10, any discrepancy found between the specifications and the building plan, in brackets, the more stringent shall prevail. That helps you legitimize coordination where there's been a mistake in details and what specifications really say, vice versa. 1.11, With County will provide construction manager for the project. The project manager is the contractor's contact with the owner. Building inspections for the code compliance will be provided by a local building official. The inspection shall be coordinated with the construction manager. See, all directives by the owner's employees. Architect or engineer of record shall be coordinated with or directed by the construction manager. And that might, you might want to word that different, it means that the only person out there that can speak for the county is the construction manager. Somebody from the water department can't come over and move the building or change the concrete detail, you've got to keep all responsibility with one person. The contractor shall provide construction plan in a timely manner with the construction manager. That means that he's got, we could call it a critical path method, but it's a modified critical path. The construction manager needs to know two, three, and four weeks ahead what subs are involved, who's going to be on-site, and what's going to be done. And any competent contractor has no problem doing that. We've left out a lot of, and most, we've left out all the federal regulations, because this is a wholly owned county building. Number 1.18, With County, the owner may wish to negotiate terms and conditions with the apparent low bidder. Whether we use that or not, I think it ought to be in there to give us the right to negotiate the best price. The owner further reserves the right to provide separate specialty subcontractors and contract directly with them. And then, that's the end of it. Is there any questions?
Well, what, the Cliff Notes version, I don't remember us ever doing anything like this before, what, what has made this necessary?
Well, yes, Mr. Dalton, he's a building-
I'm just asking, I don't know why.
I feel like after 40 years of experience, this is a better protection for the owner. You definitely have never used this, and in some cases, it's quite evident. We get, took advantage of too many times on change orders, because of different people not doing a good job keeping records, people saying things, and then not having a paper trail to back it up. Here, it's, I'm not obstinate, my job is to look out for the county and save every dollar or a penny.
And I just, I'm just trying to understand, because this is sort of, you know, new to me.
What is in the, what is in the package right now with specifications that the lane group has put together? Are the standard general conditions of construction contractor from the EJCDC, which is the Engineers' Joint Contract Document Committee? And that's typically on most of our jobs, and all of our engineers, whoever they are, have done, this is what's referenced to. The only different one that I know of is the AIA ones that we used on one of the buildings, and that was it. But what Mr. Hale is proposing is different, is taking these EJCDC documents out and then inserting the Commonwealth of Virginia general terms of conditions into it.
Stephen, I'd like to add for the company, you notice who he said those documents were written by?
Engineers.
The engineer committee that wrote them, do they sell those sale?
Yeah, we, county's got a sale.
And the AIA, same way. The AIA documents protect the architect. In some cases, they're fringe of protecting owner. Every time you copy that document, you have to pay AIA a fee, because it's a registered document, I don't know whether engineers do that or not.
You pay an annual fee, a one-time fee.
Okay, if it's a one-time fee, they're not like the AIA at all, but I personally think that AIA is a bunch of money grubbers anyway, but that, I hope that answered your question.
Well, and I just have two more, and of course, I'm just reading this briefly as we're going over in, in that section, 00800, 3A, the second, second parent, or second line, or second sentence, the owner maintains insurance on the existing building, dot, 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 which covers alterations in new construction as well as materials, you know, the project. And then, when you get over to 1.10, With County is not responsible for the means and methods of construction, is, what do we carry insurance on? I mean, is that, I guess what I'm asking is that, that seems, is it in conflict or not? I don't, I don't know.
No, it's two different things.
Okay, what are-
You homogenize two questions. Under the insurance, builder's risk and general liability is if something happens and the building, as it's being built for the owner, and it gets damaged, say it's a windstorm or a vandal's come and wrecked the structure and it's got to be replaced, builder's risk covers that, if you had some kind-
Our builder's risk.
Right.
Hours.
He said, yeah.
Yeah, if you choose for it to be ours.
Right.
Whether the contractor pays for it, or whether we use VACOR, we're the beneficiary. It's just a cost-saving, and I believe VACOR will be cheaper than one of the providers from the national insurance collective. The other part you asked, that second-party question, was means and methods. If you get in to tell the contractor how to do the work, then you're expecting a certain amounts of liability, because this guy, or whoever that is, directed them to do something in a different way. You don't want to be there either. You can say, "This is unsafe," you can say, "It don't meet the scope of work," you can say, "It don't meet the specifications." But as far as telling them, you're not doing that right, and directing, are you understanding what I'm saying? That's why it's in there.
Okay, so that falls well under liability.
It's liability.
Yeah, right.
Don't take any liability you don't have.
Sure, right. And the last question I have, I mean, again, just briefly going over, is in 1.18. Of course, I understand negotiating with the, with the low bidder, and then the owner further reserves the right to provide separate specialty subcontractor and contract directly with them, with the, with the low bid? I mean, who's them? Is it the, the construction company?
No.
I think it's the specialty contractor.
Okay, so specialty contractor, so I, that's what I'm, are we saying that, is this another way of saying that we break the job up into, into smaller?
Yep.
Okay.
Let's just use an example, because I've done some work on it. We're talking about 1,400 or 1,500 blocks, and those blocks are going to cost us $7 each at least. If we buy those blocks and the mortar and the sand, flat off the top, we're saving 5% sales tax. If we can negotiate a better deal, which in most cases you can, because you're cutting the middleman out sometime, most of the time, those are tangible things. If we buy those, the contractor, GC, does not get to put his 10% markup on it. He truly can stick you somewhere else if he wants to. The sub doesn't get to put his 15% markup on material, you're paying him his labor costs plus whatever profit he chooses to make. It also brings more of your work, most of the time, to the local community, and infuses these five or seven million dollars, whichever we're going to talk about, into the local community at a rate of exchange of about, it used to be 1.5, I've had economists tell me, now it's 1.7, when you introduce new dollars into a community.
But will they, I mean, those things will be, low bidder comes in, I guess, we bid the whole job out, low bidder comes in, and then we negotiate with, is that what this 1.18 is saying that?
No, it's saying two things here. You got, it's got to all work together. If we put it out for one lump sum bid-
Right.
Somebody just bids once on the drawings, and let's just say it comes in at seven to eight million dollars. This gives us the right to, one, to either negotiate with him-
Right.
If we can't get that, to break the job up, what's under a legal term called the Woods Rule, which some states operate under the Woods Rule, that you cannot have a general contractor. You have to have all setups, Ohio does all their state work under the Woods Rule. It's just about as arcane as our legal rule, under the Dillon Rule, but some states use it, because of collusion between general contractors setting up special pricing for public entities, mainly schools. If you get all, general contractors saying, "Schools ought to give us more money, this is a fatter cat." So by doing it, they broke that wraps and that stuff. Now, you can bring in, in either two ways with this language, negotiate what the general contractor wants to keep, what he will give up, and break it up and do multiple contracts. Makes work harder for the construction manager, because he's into more coordination of saying, "I don't need masons here until September the 30th, I need materials here September the 20th, electrician is going to start." Over this, other part of this document, it says the contractor, whoever that contractor is, has got to coordinate a schedule and work with a schedule with the construction manager. So there's no Monday morning surprises, somebody shows up ready to go to work and you're not ready to go to work.
Well, I guess, Joe, what I'm asking, and I'm just, for clarification, because I don't completely understand, that very last thing where it says owner reserves the right to provide separate specialty subcontractors, using your example of the, of the masonry work, all right, is that something that will decide before the job is bid out?
Well, you need to hear-
That's what I-
Slell's recommendation, and then we need to have this discussion after-
But you understand what I'm asking?
That's exactly what it is. It gives you the parameters and ability to start all over again. You're doing it right now. If he comes up here and says, "Let's bid it all to one contractor," you can do that with this language in there, and I guess Scott will have to mull over this, he would give us the ability to say, "We can't deal with you, it's so far over budget, we want to fall back on this, and we're going to provide certain materials, we're going to provide subs."
I guess, yeah, my, my point is, you know, you were talking about the, about the block, you know, block generally is where they can make some money, you know, contractors, you know, and that's what I'm asking, I mean, if, if they bid the job with something like that in, you know, in the, in the bid, what happens if they don't want it taken out? I mean-
They're allowing you to take it out.
Okay, can they, okay.
Let's just don't hang up on blocks.
Well, no, I'm not, I'm, I'm not, I'm just using that as an example that you're talking-
I want you to have the total scope. We've got one part that Stephen's aware of, and that Slell may remember. The county now has a price to put the most advanced 21st century lightning protection system on that building for what, $22,000, $23,000, according to Stephen?
$22,000.
And it's a proprietary spec, but this company has already said, "We'll come and do this." Lane Group didn't listen to us, well, we went to our 75%, their electrical engineers had designed an old Franklin system with fires all over the building and inadequate grounding. If there's a better system, I think we want to get the most modern system. And that's just a little number of, you know, to me, it's not a little number, but for this guy, it's a big number. We need to get the most dollars of bricks and mortar that we can for the amount of dollars we've got.
Well, I, and I guess what I'm asking is that when, when a contractor bids a job, there are certain places that they, they'll be able to make more margin than, than others.
But it's not my job to make it easy.
I understand that, but I guess, you know, if, if they bid the job thinking that, okay, this is where, you know, we're going to make a, you know, make, you know, our profit or part of our profit or whatever, and, but we still have the right to say, "Okay, well, you've still got the job, you've still got to fulfill your, your obligation to, to do the construction, but we're going to take this part out?"
Yeah, and he's, he's able to put a price on it.
Well, he will know that by these documents when he does his bidding anyway.
Yeah, he'll read the documents.
You mean, these documents? Yeah, I understand, okay. Okay, Mr. Dalton, what do you think?
Well, Stephen said, I came in yesterday sometime, 9:00 AM or something, picked those plans and specs up. Gary, everybody's dodging around the question, I want, he says, "You can't fire me," I want to tell you what I think the answer to your question. Why are you doing it this way? I think everybody said it costs more than the money you got. The only way that you can get it into the money you got is find the means to save dollars and cut some of the middlemen out and the profit and the overhead. I mean, if you get 10%, if it's 7.5 million, that's $750,000. If it's 20%, it's 1.5 million, so pretty soon, you're pretty close to budget with the money you got. I don't want to cloud either water, but I think it just needs, that needs to be said, "Why are you doing it?" I think that's the reason. I think everybody knows, it seems like. It's always out in the, "Do we have enough money? Do we have enough money?" Well, I think there's, everybody's got a little bit of feeling that maybe the money you got in your pocket may not be enough, could be, but maybe. Could be, but maybe. One of the things that, uh, I think I spent about ten or twelve hours looking at these plans about buildability, and, and these plans, in my opinion, have a lot of inherent problems. If you look just on the stru- the front part of the civil, there's no way to build the building, because there's not a layout plan, there's not a coordinate. There's not, they're supposed to provide a finished grading. I think the job you had was a rough grading job. There's not a spot elevation, there's not a, anything. So if you bid it out, the general contractor's gonna say, I gotta solve all those problems. I've gotta figure out if the spot elevation's next to the sidewalk, the pavement, everything. It's just not in these plans that you got. Not in the ones I looked at last night. I wish it was different. There's no means to set the buildings as they've drawn them. It, it's sort of like the Barbie dollhouse out here. They've just set them down, but give no dimensions from the property line, or a coordinate, or anything else. I wrote out there with Joe yesterday afternoon, because I've had some comments of, do you really know what you got? What, what has been rough graded? Well, I'm, after I drove out there, I'm not sure what you got on, on the rough grade. I mean, there's a flag here, there's a flag there. But the, the construction management, and I think you can save some money. It's gonna be an intense, uh, proposition to do it, because, I slipped my glasses down, you know, even bid out the finished grading. You know, the finished grading guy's gotta stay there the whole time, because the sidewalks have gotta be, you come in and dig your footers, somebody's gotta move the material, somebody's gotta get it back to, with a tenth or something that you can do, because otherwise, you're gonna spend a lot of money on wasted concrete, stone, et cetera. The, uh, after looking at the plans, I, I truly believe that you're gonna have to hire not only a manager, but you're gonna have to hire a surveyor, a firm that's gonna come out and stake this thing out, a geotechnical person, and a, and also a testing company. I mean, it's, they've got all this stuff in those specifications, but who doesn't? There's no, Stephen, it's not, not going anybody. I can't do it? You gotta hire somebody to do it. Who's gonna do that? You don't let the contractor do it.
Let me answer that question. And we've done this a lot of times, and I truly have done it. Stephen already had part of that answer. Lane has agreed to locate the building, and give us four benchmarks. If we want six, I'm sure we can get six. And then on buildings this size, it's not unusual that the contractor does everything off those benchmarks. He's got the ability to do it. If something gets screwed up, excuse me for recording, if it gets messed up, it's his responsibility. He can't point a finger at our guy. As far as testing and concrete, we could also require him, anytime directed by the construction manager, to make cylinders and protect those cylinders, and then we pay somebody to break them if we feel that we need to. But, you know, I, I'm not really in favor of paying a lot of money to the technical people that may or may not be needed. I'd, I'd like to have somebody, the, the construction manager, to call whenever they're needed. But on the location of building and site, I think Lane owes us that.
Well, I agree, but you don't have it today.
No, we don't have it today, but Stephen, we talked about this three weeks ago.
And you don't have the finished grading plan?
No, we don't.
I mean, you can't. I mean, it, for instance, there's one note on a whole set of documents that says performance area, which is the arena. Well, everybody knows that the arena cannot be graded down to hard clay, and that's gonna be arena floor. They've got two drain pipes that go all the way through it, plus water and sewer, that are in these specialized ditches. How do you come back and put a surface in there that deals with that arena floor? It should've been in specs, should've been addressed.
And Lane's contract, was they supposed to supply all this stuff?
Well, you ordered an arena, and you signed, how do you not address the performance area, the arena floor?
Well, we did two contracts, one grade, and then a joint throw-in to fertilizer and lime. I'd like to see verification that there was ever any lime that fertilizer put down. And was the Mount Scuffle? That grass is not gonna last long, and that's sandy clay with no use. I know some cherry tree people that can tell you a lot about this.
And the next, one of the biggest problems I have is on the front page of those documents, these general notes, that says if you do anything without contacting Lane, or, I mean, that could be even a spot elevation, that you've gotta contact and notify them of all changes, which means you're gonna continue paying.
That's item two on their general conditions.
So anytime we contact them, it's money for them?
I mean, it's, it's ridiculous, but, uh, the way I read that, you may get your attorney to look at it, but you have that second comment here. Contractors shall be responsible for coordination of construction documents, shop drawings. Contractors shall notify architect and writing immediately of any discrepancies, plans, shop drawings, or specifications. Should discrepancies be found, do not proceed until clarifications have been made by the architect engineer. And Mr. Lane has, I have spoken with him, I told Mr. Dot, I've already brought that up to him, and he said that is an oversight, that's because since they were not doing contract administration on this from our bidding it out, there's all these comebacks to the owners, and that would be updated. I haven't gotten that from him yet, but that is one that he hasn't noted. That was one of the first things Mr. Hale noticed.
But I don't need, I don't need, on, to Leo's concerns and stuff, don't we need to get Bobby down here and go over the things that's missing on, on these, and, and, I mean, quick? We need to quit phone around, we got to get this thing out the bid.
I mean, that's, there's a hundred percent plans coming in, but certainly, we know that there will be some errors, and Mr. Hale's come across a few of those, and Shadon's come across a few of those, that, uh, you know, we haven't produced the extra sets or whatever, because those do need to be corrected, so we can proceed with cutting this up and bid.
And Jill, I take, but Shadon, I concur. This is just not on the architectural. Since we've been involved all along, they never covered the directives we gave them with the grading plan. Y'all have all heard me complain about that ridge they created at the end, and when he saw it yesterday, he agreed with me, we've created a problem with the grading plan. So where do you start with trying to let Lane correct it? And how many months are they gonna want, and how much more money they're gonna want to fix their errors? It's not like we've been silent on this subject.
Correct.
Before this guy left, probably months before he left, they were given directions to step the parking lots. Do we have that in writing? I don't know. They never took that directive. They stuck with a uniform grade from top to bottom. And then at the bottom, they brought it back up to create a hill that we didn't really want. If you go out there and look at it, you can actually see how it impacts the job now. But we're really talking about both Lane contracts, you agree with that?
Well, I, I'm just talking about what.
Is out there now.
What, 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 you asked me to deal with, yes? The, the, uh, you know, the, this whole issue, and Joe, you know, as I did out there, I looked at all those stormwater ponds and stuff. Do they have enough capacity? I calculated the water off of a ten-year storm last night. And if I did the cross-sections right on those ponds, you don't have enough ponds to hold a ten-year storm. The, uh, all those.
Along those lines, we, they are still working on that stormwater management plan. Uh, and we have not seen the final approval of the stormwater management plan for what is phase two, which is building construction side.
And you can't, according to law, you can't bid this thing until the stormwater management plan is approved. So, and I haven't seen it, don't know what it says. It's just, but it, just appears problematic, that the sequen- sequencing of this. But going through the plans last night, there are details everywhere, there are conflict with details elsewhere, from different sized rebar. Every footer, and every, the way it's designed, every footer, every beam underground, has to be formed. Some of those things, I don't even, well, I know how you can do it, but you're gonna use a, a lot of framing and stuff to pour concrete.
You're saying where all it needs to be is level?
Yes. Well, instead of forming footers, there's four, five stepped-down footers in this build. They've, two places for the drains out of, from under the performance area, where they've stepped it down twelve feet to get pipes in there, which you should've just sleeved them through there, in my opinion. You got water connections here, yonder, and everywhere. And then your stormwater. One place, if, just by scale, you've got a fourteen-foot storm sewer with an eight foot of a footer, and there's a water line in between you, and an electric. I mean, one, a couple of things I told Joe yesterday. I'm glad that they'll stake it out. I think you should stake out metal rods, or, or fence posts, and paint them orange. Every building and every structure that's for the full master plan, to see if that thing's gonna work. There, yesterday, there was this storm thing sitting in the middle of what I thought was a future road. And, but anyway, it's, I think there's, so I, I'll take off my notes with conflicts, so that should go away. But how do you save some money, Gary, I, I think? And I guess I was the one that threw this yesterday wrench into this thing, about bidding this thing completely out, and they've, they've been working on it. I did that, that'll take a full, because what I told everybody yesterday in the meeting, I think it's important to know the difference, what the, just a lump sum bid is gonna cost, and what, then what the, you can save by doing it by, I call, peacemaking. I think, maybe it's not important, maybe you don't care. If you don't take away the other part, and just go directly to bidding all these component parts, and be done with it. But I think, to me, it was important, that's the reason I threw it up, and they added it up. Maybe I was way off base, but I think it's important to know, the difference of.
But we're talking about bidding the whole job, getting a full price.
Yeah.
And then doing this, negotiating, and subcontractors to see what can be saved. Well, I mean, I, I think that makes sense.
I mean, publicly, I think for you to do that, and then say, we've, we saved it and got it. Politically, publicly, I, I think it's a great move for a board. Just to go through that, uh, and there's a lot of things that we talked about, you know, some of the lay-down areas that need to be done with stone now, and seeded. We really need all those certifications from that current contractor, and a certification on the, the rough grading, as they call it.
And it's saying is what you said on our point one foot, uh, on the discrepancy allowance.
Okay.
So everything is graded within a tenth sound?
No, that's what the, that's what the requirements are. For them to certify and provide that is within that same tolerance that we talked about yesterday. And obviously, they know that the bottom area's not there now, because they don't have the filming to it. But, yes, it is, it'll all be certified.
There goes the problem.
But anyways, the certifications, you need that, because when the next contractor, the building contractor, whoever comes in, if he comes in and says, wait, this is off a half a foot, you're gonna have to pay me to correct it. You're gonna have huge change orders. And if it's too low, and they gotta build it up in stone, you're still gonna have hu- huge change orders. So it's very important for this current contract somehow get certified, and a professional stamp on it from a land surveyor, that we're within tolerances of how that thing was bid, so that you can go to the next phase. Now, some of the things that we talked about yesterday, and looked at, you know, and I looked at their cross-section on the road last night. I don't know if the county wants that, that road to be a future road, and construct it to be taken into the system, and come out the other end in sometime in the future.
I think it should be.
But if you do that, I mean, they've got some inherent problems now, that y'all can short-term fix with some blast stone and undercut, and put it down, then come back, and, but the cross-section, it's in the plans, I don't think meets the V-DOT requirements. Because there's no CBR testing or anything. It says this much stone, this much, uh, prime and double seal, or block coating, I think is what they call it. How you get rid of all these conflicts and details unless somebody has the authority to say, this is right, or this is wrong? I don't know. I had this almost bolted out last night. Final stormwater permit, heck, can't do anything till we have that.
First submission on the stormwater permit, they sent in, came back with the general comment that they weren't delineating all of the, uh, deficiencies, and certain officials that need to completely be reworked. So they would make it out a couple of months ago.
The other things, on all the utilities, stormwater, you, you're gonna come back, and I don't know if this plan, stormwater plan, addresses all those future buildings you got shown on the master plan. But there's no connections shown, provisions made for future connections from the barns, any of those areas out there, not for the water, not for the sewer. Somebody needs to be thinking, if you're gonna show them on a plan, at least put a stub out for them. The, and I guess all the conversions from silt ponds to permanent and cleanouts will be addressed as part of the closeout for Baker, hopefully. The most expensive thing, one of the most expensive things I saw is your bio retention plan. And the future maintenance of that, I don't know if you've looked at it, that you gotta mow it, mulch it, weed it so many times a year. And you've gotta have engineered biomass to put in it. And they give you a spec of how to do engineered biomass, to, to put in all these swell, dry swells, et cetera. Went through all the performance. I go through some of the things I thought about last night, that you can grade out, bid out separately, and, and probably get some smaller contractors. The finished grading, the building, the metal itself, the concrete, building erection, underground electrical, the overhead electrical, underground utilities, materials, could be block concrete, steel, silt fence, stone, lights, windows, doors, conduit, flooring, seating, plumbing, block, paving, landscaping. seating, plumbing, block, paving, landscaping, there's not a landscaping plan on this stuff either. Supposed to get a landscaping plan, so that, and there's no, on the civil drawings, anyway, maybe it's hidden somewhere, an erosion control plan, there's really no means of reestablishing grass, what gets grassed and what doesn't, on the whole set of plans. Typically, on a set of plans like this, especially where you've got pavement sidewalks, you'll have different finished grade elevations, and then the contractor's doing the finished grading, will be able to deduct six inches from the sidewalk, so he can grade it down, because it's gotta be on a slug, same thing for the pavement. The water's gotta get out of there somewhere, this, there's two elevations on the building, finish floor, 14-something, and then the arena floor is 10. That's only two elevations on a set of plan. Typically, all those details will have some kind of thing. One of the cute ones I thought was that you're supposed to grade for ramps, steps, and everything, basically at a, about a 30% slope, and then put six inches of stone, and expect that stone to sit there, and compact it. And it being 57s is what they call under there. I don't know how you do that.
Well, I mean, the plans as they are now, I mean, it sounds like a competent contractor wouldn't be able to give valid bid.
Well, I'm gonna get to that to the end here. I think a competent contractor, given full authority to change what he needs to make it happen, could do it. And I'm glad, and I think with the county in charge, probably with those notes, changes, you could probably make that happen. But, I mean, I'll just get, say it out loud, the, after going through this for hours I did, I'm not sure I wanna be involved with it. That's, and it's just, that's messed up, I believe. It's, I think you, if you went out there and had ultimate authority, and just started doing things, you could make it happen. If Lane says anything you do changes us, and we're, we can walk, because I think with all these conflicts, that there's a lot of chargebacks could happen, and a lot of change orders for a general contractor.
Could you work with us long enough to work with the Lane group to get the major when the draft is changed in and processed?
If we get all this stuff fixed, I mean, I think we need to have a meeting with Bobby Lane, and, you know, before you can...
Well, some of this stuff, these conflicts and things that Stephen and Joe, those, these things, some of these things were discussed basically months ago. They just, somebody has to go between the details, and the drawings, and the specs, and make sure all that's...
And it don't look like they've done that.
Well, let me, contractors looking at, to bid, can they do one of two things? One, they can, they can ask for clarification if they see...
They can.
Okay. But the other thing is, they can bid it like it is, and wait, and then do a change order?
Yep.
Then you ask where they were gonna make their money?
Yep. I mean, there's potential to save a lot of money doing this. I mean, they show ceramic tile, and the ceilings and stuff. I find it interesting that, then in their specs, they call out a certain kind of ceramic tile. But typically ceramic tile, you tell them what corner to start in, how to lay out, and the flooring the same way, so that it comes back. And none of that's addressed in any of these drawings. But I thought it was cute, the sinks in Camo's have a little piece of tube before to brace them to the wall, in the drawings. On hollow metal walls, that you're gonna be putting in, and you're gonna need a lot more bracing than, and those cantilevered sinks, Joe, it's got this thing, it comes back down to the wall this way, and you can roll up under them. And the water lines itself, or that's coming through, are really not braced, that I saw are strapped.
I never even see a rising plan at all.
But anyway, I think, before you're ready to bid this, there's a lot of questions that need to be addressed, and quite, I don't know if stormwater and all this is gonna play an important part, but I do think, and I think this is just me, that somehow I'd get all the coordinates of all those, the big buildings, the future buildings, and arena, or riding area, and have somebody put some metal fence posts down and paint them orange, so everybody can look and see how this thing is really laid out.
Oh, when they were talking at the Apex meeting, Joe, about the different sizes on that ring and everything, I pulled over to the master plan and looking at that, because where those buildings are had an impact, of course, they can shift a little bit back to me. But that's the thing, I was gonna, what's the maximum dimensions that would go there? Staking it out in the field would make a big impact of looking at that.
And those stormwater, and I really didn't see the top cover, if those were traffic bearing, but some of those are in the future areas around those buildings and stuff, they need to really spell out these traffic bearing covers we need, waterproof covers. And think about the future, and, but the number one problem, I say, is the certification on the existing grades, but is the stormwater ready for this full development or not?
It isn't, I haven't seen the details, but that is how it was supposed to be designed. But at the same time, we thought the whole hundred acres would've been designed for stormwater at the beginning. But the full build-out of all those buildings is what we have been advised are included in that.
In the contributory area.
Yeah.
Yeah. That stormwater swale and piping, that goes into one of the temporary traps that caused the problem.
Yep, I'm saying, yep.
All that, as I read the plan, all that ancillary buildings is supposed to go into that drainage, and go into pump, pump, pond one, and that's what it's built. You can make all that water go into pond one, in either direction. And I think that that big swale that goes around the property line, and down between the soccer field, but you're right, it doesn't say anything about that road, we don't have anything from Lane that says this is impervious road, or it's track bearing road, what kind of calculations were used for stormwater runoff. But our biggest problem of all that out there, because of that unique soil out there, is these impervious areas, impervious areas, that don't know whether y'all realize it or not, it's probably gonna be about four acres of metal roof out there. I just give them an idea of what a 10-year rating is on a five-inch rate. It's a number that's staggering.
Well, a two-inch rain off of that building gives you 173,000 gallons of water.
And that's not counting any of the ancillary buildings?
No.
That's just the big building.
That's not sidewalks, that's not paving, that's just a two-inch, 10-inch, 10-year It's a Junior Olympic, so it's 100 or something like that?
130, 140.
So move the pool over.
Move the pool, yeah.
Did you, did you look at that little initial trap, how much will it hold?
I didn't, I was just...
Press for time, I guess. My good opinion is it'll hold it for less than an hour. That kind of, that water will hold it about less than an hour.
Well, I guess some of the recognitions I thought I'd throw out today is, number one, y'all need a schedule of when Lane's gonna give the stormwater. The rest of it, just in the scheme of doing a time management schedule, you could have plenty of time. I don't know where DQ's at with that, or Lane's at with it, but that is a critical component of moving this thing forward.
Do we need to have a meeting with Lane, and go over all of these things?
Does that mean it being a meeting or not being to go over a few of the items and discrepancies that are in there, of where we're going on here?
But how about these, um, construction documents? Is, do you, what do you think of them, Sway?
Well, I got about halfway through the specs. You know, their set of specs, they give you opportunity to provide as equal stuff throughout it. I just don't think that I had enough time to go. But the technical specs, I think are all right. I think Joe's move, a few word changes, in my opinion, the Virginia general conditions, if you wanna start down the path of bidding in total, or bidding in piecemeal, I think that's entirely y'all's discretion. Probably save a little time, if you just, if you decided which path it was. If it's piecemeal, you're probably gonna get quite a few more local contractors that have the capacity to do some of that piecemeal work.
Can it be done concurrently?
It could be.
I said, could it be done concurrently? That we're bidding the whole thing out, but we're also bidding, yeah, broken into, into things, so that, I mean, I, I don't know how the bidding process works, but I mean, if it could do, if it could run concurrently, then...
But you can make a 50 divisions of it, you know? Division one is lump sum, do it all. Division two is this plus this. I mean, you've got an infinite way of breaking that out.
You can do it by technical sections.
Yeah.
With some ability to make them meld into one. You know, I've tried to let Swell have every bit of knowledge of what we are talking about, so he can make a just decision. The thing about the possibility that, that we can obtain all their plumbing figures for that, I need to ask Steve of the Ford Row and Knott's. I think, do we have somebody out at Hager Park that builds transformers?
We did this afternoon.
If we went to them, and those transformers that we've been forced over by crying and milking about buying, and we're gonna own them forever, Steve, they would build those little transformers, donate them to the project, would give them an ID, the transformers for this, by withstanding.
Oh, you're talking about the transformers inside the building?
Yeah, step-down transformers.
There's five step downs in there, that I think they're all 10, okay, there'd be, some people say they're worth $1,500, I think they're a little bit more than that. But if a local manufacturer that's here would donate those, and they get some recognition of being local manufacturers, they know how to build them. It's not, maybe one, there's one ceiling plant in there. Do we have to bid a donation? I don't think you do.
I think you don't. Take a donation anytime you want to, you just have to track.
And boy, that's one of the things we talked about, there's indication that possibly Hardee would provide all interior walls out of Hardee board instead of 5-8 sheet rock. I'd rather have a creative Hardee board right here than 5-8 sheet rock, and I think you would too. If we get that, what is the value of that? And unless we have that ability, I don't have any value as a skin plant anymore.
Well, the value of that is that all you're hiring is the installation.
The labor contract.
And the finishing and painting.
But in the bidding process, to save time, it's possible, if we have all that decided, then you could do it all concurrently, at the same time, so that, okay.
We, in the water and sewer business, we, you know, you're always taking, warding three or four contracts, the tank guy, the water line guy, the pump station guy, I mean, it's easy enough to do, it's, here at the, I think you'd have to do this, you'd have to find, fence a little area in, you wouldn't want people stealing all the stuff that you're buying and storing on site, you're gonna have to have a pretty substantial fenced-in area with stone down there, to form the work off of. Anyway, that's what I did last night.
So, what's our next step?
Obviously, schedule a meeting with the Lane group to go over some of these discrepancies, you all requiring Mr. Dalton's assistance with that.
Well, I still want to be, if we get all this stuff done, I mean, would you still consider being the project manager?
Maybe, but there's a, there's a lot of, and I'll tell you my reservations about it, the truth, just when it gets down. The, I guess it's, the way I was trained, it is almost impossible, the way county government is, to hire somebody and give them ultimate control on the site. County administrator should have ultimate control, and the board should make ultimate control of the business decisions of money. With ultimate control on the site, you'll be rubber stamping some things that happen, and you've gotta be able to live with it. I mean, it's more like a business of Steve over at the ATT building, there at Radford, he makes a decision, he's gotta go tell his, the board of directors what I did, and they've got...
Well, in my opinion, I'd rather have you doing that, making that decision than anybody else, in my opinion.
But that's really not the way government works.
Well, I know I ain't the way government works.
That's...
We're trying to fit private construction project into the framework of government.
But y'all can see through the details, I mean, it's gonna require an on-site project manager on this thing. It is not a problem.
Yeah, the only way, if you just have one general, and you just have your weekly meetings, and be done with it. And let him work out all those, because he's got a lump sum price, and you're finished. But if you go down the path of bidding all these separate, somebody's gotta be able to schedule the Mason guy in. to schedule the mason guy in, somebody's gotta schedule the plumbing guy in, somebody's gotta schedule the concrete guy in, and you may have an underground concrete guy doing footers with the building, and then you have sidewalks and all this other, these ramps and everything else that's... And I was, one interesting thing was glazing of concrete, Joe, that was in this spec.
Well, right now, I don't think any sidewalks are defined or in the contract, other than the ones that are actually adjacent to the building and go to the handicap park. All the others that are needed are not even planned yet. I don't see any more on the plan.
Now, you got the, the complete, almost exterior there.
Do you have one going to the lower parking lot?
No.
No.
You don't have any steps, you don't...
Nothing, yours twenty feet below the building.
Mm-hmm.
So those people probably not gonna like waiting up through the mud to get to the building, and we won't want them coming in after they get there. That also shows in another grass parking lot.
Yeah, but another thing that's not in this thing is signage?
No signage. And, and that might be alright with the way everything else has gone, we might be gracious that none of that's there.
Well, folks, I, is, is Lane been completely incompetent on this?
I'm gonna leave that up to the expert, I have no idea.
I think there's more questions than normal on a set of drawings. I mean, nobody puts out a set, in my opinion, nobody puts out a set of drawings that you don't have a stakeout of, how to sight of buildings, or benchmarks. I mean, none of that's there. I mean, little stuff like ceramic tile and ceiling tile, where do you start and where do you finish? I mean, it's, those are the details, maybe they don't do it anymore.
Should that have been expected on the seventy-five percent draw, or should that be on the finals?
Well, these are final, aren't they?
No, these, you're still looking at seventy-five, aren't you?
No, either of them are.
Well, then, the final.
My mistake.
Y'all know that I've spent a lot of time being on structure, but it's not just structure. Uh, the snow load, I think we finally got around to making the right decision. But if you read what it says, and Slay's done that, just off the top of my head, but number nine rod is probably an inch and eight, might be an inch and quarter, that's chunk steel that's big. The note says they have to be continuous, they cannot be welded, they cannot be spliced, they cannot be hooked. They gotta be continuous rods. Obviously, with the trailer links that are made now, you can haul those rods, but you can't carry them over and drop them in the hole, they're gonna have to be, all six of them are gonna be placed with a piece power equipment. The detail shows them to be suspended up off the concrete, abondant of, of the ditch. The contractor only has two options there, as I see it. One being that he on his own builds chairs that will carry that load out of rebar and put them in there, or he can build a gantry system over it and hang them and cut them off when they're done. Both of those are gonna cost a lot of money. The other thing that's a problem is Slay can give you an idea with his hands, how big this unit is and how wide the ditch they're saying put it in. Now, he addressed the steps in it that are just virtually not doable in the width and what they're asking you to do in that hole. Tim and I both are a good example, we can't work on this job 'cause we're too wide. You can't get in the area that you gotta put all this stuff in. Is that fair from out?
A foot and two inches, you're not getting in there, Joe. I can't get in there, can't hardly. I got little feet and can't hardly get my foot down through there.
And then Phil will have to stay. What would we use?
So I think I got the answer to the incompetency thing.
Well, I mean...
In a nice way, yeah.
The thing we've talked about a lot is the buildability of it. You know, a contractor, and I, I'm being honest with experience here, a contractor looked at these documents and said, "I wanna bid at lump sum." He would make sure he comes in low, and his lawyer would tell him how many millions he's gonna be able to make on change orders. And there's contractors like that out there. And the only time you can protect that is right now. Try to minimize the change orders and maximize the bids.
How else, when can you...
I'd ask if there's any chance that you can get a flow chart from Lane, when this stormwater is gonna be finished? Cause even though they got some out of, in these plans, and they're, maybe they're in the seed plans there. Thank you.
I have not been advised by Mr. Bone that he's received anything from them that the plan's been filed. Unless he's gotten something this week while he's on vacation, I do not know if it's been filed.
Basically, what we got is a Northern Virginia submittal, which is to get it in, to meet the deadlines, and have all these little strings hanging out. But once we get that, or county gets that, you can put together a, some kind of a schedule of when all this could happen, the bidding process, and people can be working on these bid alternatives, I'll call them.
And that takes a lot of work, well, lining up all the bid alternatives, I'm putting that work, yeah.
Yeah, because bid alternatives, when you're hiring piecemeal work, I've gotta tell the water guy, or the outside guy, he's gotta connect, you gotta give all the directions in the bid of who's responsible to make the final connections, because I'll be doing part of it, then you may have a painter coming in finishing part. You gotta think through all that as part of the, the bid process.
So what day are you free, we can have, set up a meeting with Lane?
Well, I don't have any more trips out west.
You ain't going to California anytime soon.
Wednesday is not good, obviously.
We need to, how about Monday?
Well, I think your Stevens is just gonna have, in my opinion, is get with Lane and see when they can do it, and then send us some dates out.
Okay.
I mean, we could, we could set early. A little bit I've been involved with this, we've set days before, and they can never do it.
I got a note here, I'll take it with Bobby first thing in the morning, see what we can line up, and I'll start with Monday of next week and work from there.
We just need to get with it and get all these things corrected.
Well, let me, just a general question, does engineer design and then architect draw it, or is that all architect?
No, it's collage.
Collage, yeah.
The architectural drawings, and then you got the civil drawings and the mechanical and everything.
But I mean, you know, all the, uh, the, the rebar and all that stuff that you're talking about, the differences, that's, that's, that's an engineer, or is that an architect? That's made those...
Could be any one of these right here, depending what part of the work it is. That's the reason all those people, different people stand.
Oh, okay.
Those details based off A, C, M, F, S drawings, could be any of those.
Your former student is structural, Alan Long.
Alan Long, I don't...
No, he may not be a student.
No.
He's married to Lisa Abresol.
No, I don't, I don't think...
He married you, former student, Lisa Abresol, Dr. Robb.
Oh, oh, well, yeah, okay.
Must be a good guy.
Well, I don't know, I would've thought that a Rory treat girl would've straightened it out, but...
Unfortunately, I've confused, made a cloud here, but I think I've done exactly what I was asked to do.
Well, we won't, we won't start, we don't want to start into this and end up having a million dollars' worth of, two million dollars' worth of change orders.
What would your recommendation be of structuring a construction manager in, in compliance with governmental frameworks to oversee?
Say that so I can understand.
I, I got it.
Would your recommendation be of trying to establish, if you were not interested in proceeding along this line, project management of this, in compliance with governmental framework? I mean, obviously, could bid out for an engineering firm to provide your services like what we rejected from the Lane group in this entire contract administration?
Well, I guess there's two avenues I think you can do. One is that you could, hate to call him a clerk of the works, engineering type, that can do it, and be an employee of the county for a short period of time, which is basically the discussion with me, or you're gonna have to do a professional ad and ask for proposals. There may be a third alternative, but I'd have to think about it.
And don't you think you ought to add that if you go to professional solicitation, there are very few firms that do that, and they're generally tied to a general contractor?
Most of the firms that are doing it today are doing it as, we'll just do it all, including the construction, like the Gatorade group, Brown and Rude, the, the group that did the jail, was that group?
I wasn't there when they did it.
Oh, you were? But there's Phillips and Jordan, there...
Martin Marlowe, out of DC.
There's a group I'm gonna do that.
Nicholson out of Harrisonburg. All of them are tied though to a general contractor in their art.
Most of them own a general contractor.
That's where the problem is, and you know it. There's not a pure engineering firm that I know that's in that business.
Yeah, most of them own a construction company, Joe. They just have it, the corporation rolled over, and, and same board of directors oversees everybody.
And I don't really care, nobody y'all care to know how that works, not, but here's how it works. If he's a construction manager firm on one job, and Stevie is on one, and I am on one, we all use the same cells, so there's what's wrong with you. You owe him a job, he owes you a job, and he owes me a job. So how is the owner really fairly represented here? The state does it all the time, but look at how they do their work. Right now, there's a construction management firm running everything it's had.
And the tunnels.
Uh-huh.
A maintenance management firm's running the tunnels and playing.
Yeah, and what, what's happened to tech was that lots of local folks that had been managing that university for twenty-five, thirty years and know where the problems are, have been replaced by people that are just out of college, and everything is about how much is my company gonna make out of administering this thing. You probably don't wanna hear that, but that's the real truth.
Well, it's not, it's not inexpensive, it's, uh...
Here, I may take up preaching. I've come to the conclusion that your occupancy and feet are, hold up more stuff in Commonwealth than anything else.
Well, I don't wanna be in the, in the audience when you give your first sermon. Can he do it at your church?
Sure. The subject is evil of your architecture.
That's why I'm at an independent church, too.
You can invite anybody?
Okay, well, I guess we've got all the way through C and D, grading, the discussion on suitable material.
Well, I, I guess, let's talk just a little bit about this construction management unless something changes next week. And, and that would not affect anything we're gonna talk about here, 'cause we can just pull these things back. How do you all want to proceed with procuring search? Which avenue do we go down along that? Or we can put it both out there, or someone be a manager, and another put, put something out for a firm to come in and do it?
Well, have you definitely decided you don't wanna do it?
There would have to be significant changes in those plans before I do reconsider.
Well, I think we've got to get that done anyway.
So I would think we could call it a county administrator's recommendation, and put it out there and ask for applications, proposals, you don't have to accept any of them.
Well, we can, yeah, we can do that.
I mean, I just, I wanna get this thing moved, if, if he doesn't...
Well, I mean, we got a lot of problems before we can get anything moving, according to Slay.
I just, I'd rather, I'd rather go ahead and put that out there and hope that you all, and that when we meet with the Lane group next week, you all may be able to get Mr. Dalton maybe reconsidering where he's going, but that way it doesn't hold any longer of getting proposals, like you.
Saves a week.
Yep. Yep.
How do we have a meaningful main meeting with Lane based on our history of past meetings with them, without having him, even if you wanna call him the acting construction? We need a construction administrator on line pretty darn quick, so we can get things done. You need a dedicated person to bring this job together and give it out and give the bids. We haven't even talked about the, the workplace. Right now, the construction manager is either gonna have to do or ask assistance on all the shop door reviews, because they're, said that we're not doing any of them. We're not doing that for you. Steven and I, and I wanna talk about the money, Matt, before Tim adjourns here, how much attention have we got to really work with Lane on?
Nah, he's bull yesterday, Joe, I don't...
The second one is, when we gave that bullish edict that they would finish by a certain date, and they totally ignored that one, does that apply to now? How long have we had these documents?
Last week and two.
Okay. Does their penalty apply? I'll bet you they'd say no, we got your penalty. Did we vote on a penalty if they weren't due by the twentieth?
Yeah.
Delivered?
We did.
We did. They didn't pay a bit of attention to that, they called us, said we can't do it, hadn't been able to get our guys together. So where is the money? One thing, we all know that we got enough retention. If there's any due checks to Lane, do you make an action to hold them? Money talks, they'll come to the table if there's money involved. They will come to the table if there's liability involved. Otherwise, we're gonna get the runaround into this time next year. Based on history?
Do we still owe them money?
We still owe them money, and, and yes, and the conversations I've had with Bobby so far on, I said, Bobby, we've come across a few things and that, and he said, "That's why we didn't give you," but, you know, the two sets right now, we didn't, for anything else, we have to give you the CD or the disc to tell we had gotten word from you all that you all were filed and everything, so, I mean, I think we need to meet this early as we can next week with them, correct these items, go to the next.
Okay.
I'm not willing to let that slide. Are we gonna pay them? Are we gonna keep some money? I'm not willing to let that slide. Are we gonna pay them? Are we gonna keep some money?
We're not gonna pay them anything, in my opinion.
You know whether there's anything in the process of being paid?
There, there's nothing right now. Um, I'll, I'll, I'll pull the numbers, Joe, and get them for you.
And I think we'd like to know how much retention we've got on both contracts. We've got two contracts with them paying.
On the rough grading side of it?
Yeah. Right now, that's where our problem is here, so let's don't release that money. And over here's the architectural contract, and I feel like we've already been beat up quite enough on change orders. For how much money's left there? Bobby told us he took our profit away from us, when he took the construction administration away from us. That's his problem with what he gave away to his subs, not ours. Everyone we've dealt with since then has been about subs. We found what we felt was deficient work soil in a seventy-five percent. And then we thought it was deficient, they come back, we had lengthy arguments about a couple of things. And then they had the audacity to charge us for making the changes that we found in the seventy-five percent review.
Is this a question we'll try that again?
I bet you they'll try again.
Mr. Chairman, is there a recommendation to go ahead and advertise for employing a position and firm to at least, or getting those, uh, put together and advertised out?
Yeah. And then we can, I mean, that'll save us some time. And then get, set up a meeting just as quick as we can get Lane down here, and hopefully you're available.
Well, this, this hiring a firm thing, you're authorized solicitation for quite a bit of money?
We don't have to accept it. I mean, we don't have to approve any of it, but we'll at least know how much it's gonna cost.
Okay. And you, you're still not willing to make a decision on the general conditions and how to handle the job?
Can we get all those typed up with those additions and all that, and it will?
Well, do we want, Slayel says he had and went through them. Do we want to give him a chance to go through them and see if any words?
I don't think that's really what you said was, that you hadn't gone over them.
Well, I went over the six sections you gave me yesterday. One was the adoption agreement, one was the state...
Documents.
It was an agreement between the contractor and engineer, between owner and contractor, and the special condition. I just haven't seen what Steven handed out that.
That's what you handed out and Jennifer typed up yesterday. And we also have to have somebody else do it. We'll get those typed up. I'll email them out to you all, I'll email them. Scott, I'll email them to Mr. Dalton, too.
My impression is the current conditions that are in there are more favorable to the Lane Group. If you went with the state, it would be more favorable to, to us, the county.
I'd, I'd rather go with the state documents. We just make, need to make sure everything's worded and everything is put what it's supposed to be.
I think we should go with the state documents. Joe, isn't there a requirement that you adopt this written?
O three hundred's got, uh, we would adopt it. O three ten is what it is.
Yeah, there's a thing you gotta adopt to use the state.
Yeah, and it ties you legally to the state documents with, with no way that there can be a breach contract for it later. Whereas some contractor reads the sheets in the general conditions, and he hadn't read them. If I was ever hanging out there, I didn't understand if you legally adopted, that's the whole question.
Well, do y'all wanna adopt them now? We entertain a motion.
Until we get the final version typed up and get this wording correct, I would not recommend it. I think everybody agrees, and I think it's out there we need to go.
So when's your next meeting? Can you have them, Steven?
I mean, the next meeting is... Is the twenty, um...
Twenty-fifth?
The twenty-fifth. That's, um, not next week after next? Yep. Do we need, do we need to do it before then? We can recess till next week and have, and meet again.
Is there a, can you be forceful and, and let's have the meeting with the Lane Group prior to our next meeting?
I'm trying to have it next week.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but if, we, we don't need to do anything until we get ready to do something.
Can I quote you on that?
That, it sounded a little Dr. Seuss-y.
Seussy, how do you spell it? Does that make any sense to you, Steven, that we need to know where we're going with the Lane Group?
Well, before we do, before we adopt this, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I mean, I don't know why we adopt this when that's just the first hurdle of many. And if you want more time to look at it, that gives you more time to look at it. It gives Scott time, and we really know what that means, that it's gonna take a while, and he's gonna have revisions, so we can keep the cost.
Well, can we put a rush on Scott to get these, get it done?
I, I had already done that before this last meeting, I told him, uh, that he needed to start reviewing these things, because he hadn't had all of these. Um, and there's just a couple of minor, like I just noticed, an numerical reference that's not matching up.
I don't think a week, well, everything should be done. We can adopt them on the twenty-fifth, if that's suitable to everybody.
Let me give a polling of y'all's opinion. Do we need to quit working on this thing and try to get, quit trying to get donations, quit trying to get private sector involved? Because as you know, you just don't walk into an H R person and him have the authority to give you anything. If y'all wanna abandon that idea, I'll, I'll step down and quit working on it. If you think we ought to take it to a committee to do this, is that something you want done by the economic development committee? Is the building committee, as it's structured, have time to do that? This is real money, and we need to either not bother these people or be willing to accept it. Because we're gonna get damaged if we set up a deal and then we renew. Tick tock.
Tick tock, tick tock. What does the board, what, were you talking about, you know, the donation of the Hardy Board, gravel, and all of these other, other things that you've been talking about? Is that what you're, you're talking about?
Major items. The Transformers, I think it's possibly a doable deal, because they're local. Hardy can think they're local, because we don't see this division in New River Valley like some other people do. I've tried to get a price for what five-eight sheet rock costs. I took a liberal, a blue sky estimate. There's thirty thousand feet of sheet rock, thirty thousand square feet of sheet rock, at least. A five-eight sheet rock, any of you that's done anything lately, what's a sheet of five-eight sheet rock cost?
Well, in a, in a public building, it's very dam- damageable, too.
Yeah, but that's what's fact. My whole thing is, is that like Slayel said, and like you heard me say the other night, if there was plenty of money, it still wouldn't be the right thing to do. It's not the right thing to do, to throw money away just because you got it. But we don't have it, so it's not, it's, it's not an option, unless one of you got a money machine or somebody wins the lottery. And Tim and I've already got a deal, if either one of us ever wins the lottery, we're gonna finance this thing. But he'll probably try to weasel out of it.
You win the water, lottery and finance, I'll vote yes. You'll vote yes?
That gives you some more incentive.
Well, you know, if we can get stuff donated, get stuff, but what if we go with a, a, a general contractor, and we just have lumped some bid and let them, you know, that will affect that money.
Not necessarily. There's language in there to let you talk for negotiation with low bidder. Y'all always have that. Y'all always have that ability to negotiate, because that's where the real money is.
Well, I thought that that was the idea behind what, what was in there, that you could, you could deal with subcontractors, and, I mean, whether they pay for it or not, if somebody, if somebody donates, that you could count them as a subcontractor.
Well, we'll still do it, and it will turn, just leave it to the economic development committee.
All right, I, I know some of us are in a hurry, but we're talking serious stuff here. Slayel, if, this could be anybody, but just say for argument that you're qualified and you'll have some kind of dream that you all do this. You've gotta have the authority in this document to deal with the general contractor or the subs. This supplemental general condition gives you authority, gives the county authority that it does not have under the general condition. Do you agree with that?
Yeah, I agree it does.
And that's why they're site-specific to a building, that you can take the general conditions that are really law, most of them are, have the statute right in there. But it gives you the ability to apply these, I think there's fifty-eight items in general condition. Steven, you guys watch the last one, fifty-eight, fifty-eight. But it also gives this person, plus whatever committee you wanna give it to, the arbitrary of waiving any of these positions, that because we're not the bureaucratic state organization, we don't have some of these positions. But that language gives him and whatever committee the right to waive that or to appoint somebody or the committee will take care of that. That takes away the absolute that Slayel was concerned about, of giving some one person total authority over that site and the building they're gonna use it. But the person that's out there day to day has got to have the authority to, to match the responsibilities.
But, okay, you, but you're not talking about circumventing the whole board with the committee, are you?
No, no, but the board's gotta be reasonable, that if you've got a critical decision, we can't wait two weeks until a contractor, we can't give you an answer for two weeks. Because if it's over, whether you put a rebar here or there, or you eliminate one, or you add one, does that really anything the board needs to do?
Well, I, that, those are kind of, you know, you know, minor details. I think those are construction, you know, you know, type items.
That's what I'm calling it.
Yeah, okay.
If we were talking about a five-hundred thousand dollar change order, do you think I wouldn't want the board arguing about not doing it? Now, a five-hundred thousand dollar credit, we'd probably jump the gun to prove it.
So?
Are we done?
I gotta talk about this change order, or this, uh, this last thing. It's a graded contract discussion of unsuitable material. Of course, Mr. Dalton's not left yet, so get some input from him as well. Basically, on the Long Beach entrance road coming into this thing.
Why don't you start out by shocking everybody that we agree?
We got, we've got about four hundred and fifty feet, and it's on about the third page of this document right here. Shows the general area. So about four hundred and fifty feet of bad material that is there. Unsuitable material ranging in depths up to seven feet or more in some areas. Geo Services, who is, is a geotechnical firm that's on site out there doing the certifications and stuff for Baker's, uh, has presented this as an option for fixing it. And it's basically cutting out about five feet of material throughout that whole length of it. Four hundred, four hundred and fifty feet. And you gotta go down to the maximum, go to five feet. If you get good material in between the seams, you only go down two feet in there and do it. Come back and then put rip rap in there, compact it, and then put a crusher run on top of that, and then put fill material, which, we would steal the fill material from the location right next to it there, the hillside on the backside of the building, to go into it. The problem is, and Mr. Dalton may have run some moments himself, the rip rap and the crusher run and everything that go in there, you could get up to a hundred thousand dollar change order on this very east, uh, probably over a hundred thousand dollars of change order. The, of everywhere on this site, this thing to be, this is absolutely the worst location, because it is in the roadway coming into it. To go to the future, BDOT Road, obviously, they wanna see that material as compacted and everything in it.
Was this so?
Yes, uh, Geo Service also gave a price just for oversight during this. I got a price for E C S, and a better price for us to proceed with, with them doing the oversight. And I don't want the same company that's doing Geo Tech work for the contractor to be the one overseeing it, because the more deeper they dig, the more for them, the more for the contractor and everyone else. So I'd rather have E C S. We could get another proposal for resolution from E C S or another firm like them to give us a call. We could install it like this, but like I said, it, it would end up with a hundred thousand dollar plus change order. Or secondarily, uh, not fully solve the problem, do a subcut put material in there now, uh, compact it to get us through the construction phase up, see what holds up, go forward, and then go from there. Mr. Dalton, you looked at it yesterday. Do you have any recommendations?
The only thing I, I think I told Mr. Phil is that... You might consider, because you're gonna have a lot of people trucking over heavy loads. Just cut it down twelve to eighteen inches, put your little Geo mat, and then put blast stone on it. And then at the end of the, you'll have a finished grader there. If it doesn't tighten up and bridge over, which it might bridge over, at six feet, you could bridge stuff instead of having to remove it. Then at that point in time, just have that finished grader, just remove it, and come back with the recommendation. And quite frankly, I think I'd rather have E C S.
Yep, that's a personal opinion. I, very hundred percent, that's why I gave them a call. What type of rock, do you think, is, is they're unclassified?
I'd just do the blast rock unclassified, and time you run over it, it'll nap itself in.
I think your recommendation, Mr. Haywood, was six inches, yours is a foot.
Yeah, and shot rock, they're proposing, he's talking about shot rock quarry run, and they're talking about erosion control stone that is thirty-two fifty, I think, a ton. That's the most expensive thing you can buy at the quarry. And the, the Fox is making recommendations for chicken house.
Yep, absolutely. I, I think the idea of just throwing an undercut, uh, cut about a foot of it out, bringing the shot rock in, doing that entire four hundred and fifty feet, and, and doing the mayor. Uh, no. Would you still bring in ECS just to do this part of it, or just put that in there and be done with?
I'd just put them be done with it, see where it ended up.
Most of the interstate's running over, the same solution.
Because, uh, at the end of the day, you're gonna get a lot of seventy, eighty thousand ton loads, pound loads, running across that tractor truck. And that brings up another. Before you let Baker go, they need to actually take a loaded dump truck and prove, prove for all of that whole site.
You mentioned him, we're shooting out the weeds here, but that Baker needs to come back and clean the silt out of those ponds before that.
Oh, yeah. And Bill and I have already talked about that. They cleaned silt out of one of them.
On this road thing, if you put that shot rock in there, and then put the four inches of unspecified material like the quarry sold, that they'll sell for five dollars a ton. And that's even cheaper than we can buy at Austin's field. And then part of this solution comes next, is what's put over it. If you put a shot rock in there and we don't put that non-spec material over it, somebody's gonna pack an oil pan or tire vehicles driving over it. We need to get the road ready, put the stone on it, because there's no way that D usually will release this permit until that road's covered with something. It's bare ground.
So your recommendation is to go down a foot and do that?
I think at this point in time, absolutely, to have pumping. I mean, they've been running thirty-five cubic yard pans across it.
Yep. I, I mean, to me, that, Jonah, like he said, he said we were shocked. He said, you know, we agreed together on that, but, uh, I think he was more shocked that we agreed on that than you, Gary, but he says that, uh, cut it out.
We need, we...
Put in the Geo fabric.
You wanna make a motion on that and...
I don't know, we need a motion on that, we need a motion how to pay for it.
It'd be a change order, and it, I, I just, because of the dollar value, I just wanted to let you all know where we were going with it. We don't have the calculations of the, the dollars yet, but that's a whole lot cheaper alternative than what this is.
Was everybody in agreement to do, do that?
We'll proceed with that.
Well, right now, they're not doing any work out there, except utility work, and they're blaming it on you.
They're, they're ready to move forward on this right here if we, if we release it. And I was not gonna approve a hundred thousand dollars directive for them to change this until I talk to you all. And I didn't think it was the right avenue to go.
So, if we got anything else to come forward to board at this time?
Uh, whatever committees I'm on next week, I'm gonna be gone.
Okay.
Water committee's Tuesday at nine-thirty.
And I guess fire and rescue's supposed to be Monday.
Budget is Thursday.
I'll be back.
I guess you can go.
Well, I'll be back Thursday, but I won't be in the, uh...
Why, you ain't gonna be here?
Well, I've got, I've got, Thursday I'll be back, but I've got regional water at nine-thirty, and then I've got something at eleven-thirty, and then I've got another meeting at one o'clock.
When's the budget meeting set for? Four? Will you be there for that?
I hope, I hope so. What the other meeting I'm, I'm going to is that Lisa Moore is retiring from, uh, from Mount Rogers. And so we've got, we have a committee that has to meet with, uh, people from the state to talk about whatever they talk about, and, uh, so, gotta do that. The other thing is, uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, I won't be here at the twenty-fifth meeting. Ron's gotta have, uh, you know, kind of procedure on her back, so I'll, I'll be gone, so pass anything you want to on it. Hey, you got a, you got a free day with no arguments, just pass it all.
You can do like the president, you can send your daughter in to sit in, can't you?
Oh, yeah, yeah, I know. Believe me, you'd rather have me here.
Okay, so...
Do we need to move the water committee to Thursday?
Well, he won't, not during the daytime, he won't be.
What do you do, I mean, New River, New River Valleys is, or New River Regionals at nine-thirty, so, I mean, you could do it before that, if you, if we needed to.
Well, the only difference, if there's not three, then it just comes to the board and we have to make a motion.
There...
But I mean, if there's something that, you know...
There may be an advantage to moving the water committee, um, it doesn't affect any of us, but our engineer that was by the day is coming to this meeting, uh, and he's working two kids' schedules, it didn't work out well. He originally, and I think I may have incorrectly told him over the phone, that he was on a Thursday, but, uh, if that's the case, and Thursday works better, and that's scheduled, is Thursday working better than you all?
My Thursday's shot anyway, so, yeah.
That's what I was gonna say. I mean, if, if we do it early Thursday morning, then, I mean, I'll, I'll just have to come to town one time next week during the morning.
Well, Hal, Hal, what do we have on the agenda? Will it take over an hour?
Should not.
Well, what if we do it at eight-thirty, because then all we have to do is just drive over to the town office at nine-thirty?
Sure, sure. Let me see what I can work on on that.
I mean, is Gene, is that okay with you?
That's fine.
I mean, there's no reason, come early and it, we've gotta kill time.
Cohen, can you sit in on the fire and rescue committee Monday morning?
I mean, if you think we need it, we'll do it at eight. I mean, like Gary, I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it at seven, and, and almost last an hour, have to spend...
Well, I just thought if it, if it took, you know, less than an hour, we can come in at eight-thirty, and that way, 'cause I'm not gonna get home until Wednesday.
Late Wednesday.
Yeah, so, uh, I, yeah, I'd appreciate an extra thirty minutes if...
Stephen, we have any thing, agenda items that would, on the fire and rescue, that you know?
Don't really have any big items directly for fire and rescue. We have got to set an evening meeting, um, with the chiefs, um, and to start talking about some of this, uh, company nurse and Bay Corp workers compensation and all of that stuff with, with...
Well, we just deal with the fire and rescue until you get that set up, and we'll just have...
That'd be good.
We have that on an evening meeting or something on this schedule to do it at that point in time?
Yeah.
Yep.
Well, we're probably gonna do nothing, it'll bother you all more, or we may end up having to set up some meetings at the individual apartments in the process. We wanna get all the chiefs and everyone together to go through those steps and process.
And then Gary can be here for that.
Okay.
Yeah, thanks.
Is any other meeting that needs to be moved or looked at?
I'll confirm Thursday, the, the water committee meeting is one morning with everybody, Thursday will be okay.
Let's go, send an email.
I'll email, and we'll also talk.
Okay. So is anything else? If not, then we're adjourned.